Call the meeting to order, roll call please.
Mayor Rankin.
Here.
Vice Mayor Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Salaya.
Here.
Councilmember Hawkins.
Here.
Councilmember Fanyo.
Here.
Councilmember Walter.
Here.
Councilmember Woolridge.
Here.
We have a forum. Thank you. Need a motion to adjourn to executive session?
Make a motion to adjourn to executive session.
Second.
We have a motion to second adjourn to executive session for legal advice on pending threatened claim. Oh, no, we're going to talk about the CDBG grant with the Women's Club first. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, we're in executive session. Need a motion to adjourn from executive session?
I still move.
Second.
We have a motion to second adjourn from executive session. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Did, who made the motion?
I did.
Ruben made the motion, Tommy?
Salaya.
Second.
Tommy, second.
I'll make a motion to adjourn to executive session.
We have a motion, need a second?
Second.
I motion to second adjourn to executive session for discussion on Curus Resources. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. We're in executive session. Need a motion?
I make a motion to adjourn from the executive session.
Second.
We have a motion to second adjourn from the executive session. Any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. We've come out of our second executive session, we have some business we have to take care, we're going to take a five-minute break before we go into regular meeting. We're back in session. Next order of business will be the invocation performed by Reverend Donald Woolridge of the Union Baptist Church.
God of heaven and earth, Father, we thank you for this another day, a day in which we are allowed to make you our first thought. I thank you, God, for this council sitting in place, the leadership of this great town, that as they make decisions, you will be the first thought, that they'll ask for the mind of God in consideration of the impact on this town and on families and on this community. Father, I pray that you will come against any desire for schism, dissension within this body. Father, we pray in the name of Jesus and for his sake, amen.
Amen. Valerie, would you at least some pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next order of business is called to the public. Call the public for public comment on issues within the jurisdiction of the town council. Council rules limit public comment to three minutes. Individual council members may respond to criticism made by those commenting, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, members of the council shall not discuss or take action on any matter during an open call to the public unless the matters are properly noticed for discussion of legal action. Elizabeth, come forward, young lady.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Tonight I'd like to give you an update on the progress of the Florence Food Environment Assessment and provide some information that I've collected so far. The food environment includes the number, type, location, and accessibility of food outlets such as grocery stores, as well as what consumers encounter in and around places where they buy food, such as the availability, cost, and quality of healthful food choices. During the month of January and the first week of February, I facilitated three community meetings and attended the library's newly formed coffee club meeting. In total, thirty-one people attended those four meetings, and twenty-six individuals have opted to stay connected to the coalition via email and through some volunteerism. During the meeting, I asked four simple questions to get discussions going. Why did you attend the meeting? What is the number-one change you would like to see in the Florence food environment? What does healthy food mean to you? And how far do you have to drive to get healthy food? It will not surprise you that people had strong reactions to these questions, and I would like to share their voices with you. People said they attended the meeting either simply out of curiosity, because they wanted to support the project, or because they, or and, because they believe that healthy eating is important. As far as changes people would like to see in the Florence food environment, many policy-level ideals were generated. But in summary, many community members felt that the existing healthy choices in Florence are too expensive, they want increased access to fresh produce and whole grains for a reasonable cost, they want restaurants in the area to support healthy choices, and they would like to see more local production of produce. When asked how they define healthy foods, the range of responses is what you might expect. People mentioned staying away from fast food or preparing food at home. Some people focused on nutrients, saying whole grain, not full of fat or sodium, or knowing how many carbs there are in a serving. Some people defined healthy food by what should not be in food, like no chemicals, free from preservatives, or gluten-free. And some people were thinking about healthy food as fresh, raw and unprocessed, food from the garden, locally raised, organic, or as close to nature as possible. And finally, some people were thinking about food as medicine, in a statement like, "Food that helps people deal with certain illnesses." Perhaps the most telling information comes from the last question, how far do you have to drive for healthy food? There were only a couple of people who did all of their shopping and eating within the town's borders. And those were seniors who had limited transportation and relied on the communal meals at the senior center and at Florence Gardens in Caliente. Most of the community members I met with stated they traveled either within Pinale County to Coolidge, AJ, Santan Valley, or Casa Grande, or to Maricopa County, Queen Creek, Gilbert, Chandler, or Mesa to purchase food approximately once per week. In their words, "Community members traveled regularly, between twelve and fifty miles one way, to buy healthy foods." Many community members commented that they would prefer to keep their dollars in town, but there are no cost-effective options for them. As part of this process, a number of policy-level solutions were generated by the community to try to improve the food environment. The next step in this assessment is to make a community survey available to anyone who lives or works in Florence to gauge the community's interest in the various options. The survey will be available electronically via a link, and printed versions will be available at the library and the senior center, starting tomorrow. If appropriate, I would like to make the link available for posting on the town's website. I will also send the link to the newspaper and circulate it through the coalition members. If anyone would like access to the link directly, you can email me at E-Kaiser, E-K-I-Z-E-R, at gmail dot com. Thank you for your time, and I will continue to keep you posted on this project as it progresses.
Thank you. Seems like you've done a lot of work already.
Thank you.
Karen Wall. Karen?
Good evening, Mayor Rankin, Vice Mayor Smith, and council members. I saw that you would be meeting this evening in executive session to discuss the $140 million claim against the town by Curus Resources. I'm here to let you know that I and over two-hundred-and-fifty grassroots community members support and appreciate all that you have done to defend the general plan and prevent the Florence Copper Project from destroying it. We encourage you to stay strong and maintain your position. Thank you for all you do for our community.
Thank you. Any other members of the public have anything they want to bring up for it? Seeing no movement, I'll close, call to the public. Lisa?
Public hearings and presentations. A public hearing and discussion approval/disapproval of forwarding a recommendation to the Arizona Department of Liquor License and Control on Rodney Herbert's Ray Ranch Investors LLC application for a new Series X liquor license located at the Future Super Stop located at 649 North Pinale Parkway, Florence, Arizona. The town clerk's office did receive an application for the site that's located in between McDonald's and Sonic. The site had been posted and remained posted for twenty days. There was no public comment that was received into the clerk's office regarding this application. I did send a copy of the application over to the police department to ask if there was any concerns on their behalf, and they are, as well as the town clerk's office, is forwarding a favorable recommendation to the council for the Arizona Department of Liquor License and Control.
Any member of the council have anything they'd like to ask Lisa? Okay, at this time I'll open the public hearing. Does any member of the audience have anything they'd like to say on the public hearing on Rodney Herbert's request for liquor license? The only thing, as I told you Lisa, I'd still like to have comment from Jill, who has a private prison that borders their property. I'd like to notify them of this. Any other discussion from the public and from the council? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Need a motion? Do you want a motion tonight, right?
I'll make a motion that we, that we accept or recommend the license for the Super Stop liquor.
Second. We have a motion to second to send to the State Department of, Arizona Department of Public Safety and Liquor Board, a favorable recommendation on liquor, Series X liquor license for the Super Stop location of 649 North Pinale Parkway here in Florence. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Item B, presentation of a service award to Laura Carter Felice for fifteen years of dedicated service to the town of Florence. Mayor Rankin and Ray Hartzell, the Parks and Rec Director, will be issuing this service award.
All been fun.
Somebody getting old.
Yeah, I'm getting old. You know, our senior sitter is better off because of you. The people down there really appreciate you and love you. You've put together a program down there, I knew you could do it a long time ago. We're happy you're there. We went through a lot of changes, but you've been here fifteen years, and it's dedication like you that the town council, citizens of Florence, appreciate Laura. And we've been friends longer than fifteen years, but I'm proud to say that you're a town of Florence employee. With that, here's your certificate of appreciation for fifteen years of service, for loyalty, dedication, and commitment to service to the town of Florence. Laura, thank you again very much. Ray, what do you got there? Another little card for her? Man, I'll tell you what, that's good. You have anything you'd like to say?
Thanks, Mayor. I just kind of want to reiterate what Mayor Rankin mentioned and kind of expound on that just a little bit. I think it's safe to say that there's probably nobody in the town that really has the dedication and the commitment to the senior communities that Laura has. And being here fifteen years, and through several supervisors and several assistants and working her way up to run the program by herself as she has, really goes towards her commitment to not only the seniors, but the town of Florence in general. And again, I would agree with what the mayor mentioned, there's been a lot of ups and downs, and Laura's stood by the town and been there for the town and the town's citizens and the senior community, and I wanted to thank her for that.
And you know, you've got a dedicated staff behind you, and it's because of your leadership that that staff is there and doing their job that they're doing. And again, on behalf of the town council and citizens of Florence, thank you very, very much for everything you've done.
Appreciate it.
All items indicated by an asterisk will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a council member or member of the public objects at the time the item is called. Item A, approval of accepting the register of demands ending January 31, 2013, in the amount of $1,688,424.95. Item B, approval of entering into an extended ground lease agreement with Pulte Home Corporation, Inc., for the continued use of the Town of Florence Fire Department, Station Number Two, that's the temporary site. Item C, adoption of resolution number 1381-13, a resolution of the Town of Florence, Pinale County, Arizona, authorizing the mayor, Tom Rankin, town manager, Charles A. Montoya, and finance director, Becky Galin, to act as signatories for the transaction of business on the Police Department Evidence Trust Fund at National Bank of Arizona and declaring an emergency. Item D, adoption of resolution number 1382-13, a resolution of the Town of Florence, Pinale County, Arizona, authorizing Mayor Tom Rankin, town manager, Charles A. Montoya, and finance director, Becky Galin, to act as signatories for the transaction of business on all Town of Florence bank accounts and declaring an emergency. Item E, authorization to forward a favorable recommendation to the Arizona Department of Liquor License and Control regarding the Anthem at Merrill Ranch Community Council's application for a special event liquor license on March 16, 2013, for a event known as Playden Sports Outreach. Item F, approval of the appointment of Damon Anderson to the Florence Industrial Development Authority Board with a term to expire December 31, 2013. Mayor members of council, that is your consent agenda.
Does any member of the council or the public have anything they'd like to take off the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll take a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda as written.
A second.
We have a motion to second to accept the consent agenda as written. Any other discussion? Hearing none, favor signify by aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Item 10 is department reports. Tonight, our town manager would like to give an oral update to the council.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council. I had two items that I wanted to discuss with you. The first one is regarding the Arizona Department of Transportation and Construction that will be occurring approximately off and on for the next two years on Highway 79 and 79B. I talked to Wayne, he wants to give you a quick update, just so you have more details and so the public knows what's going to be occurring there.
Mayor Rankin, Vice Mayor Smith, and town council, basically, last Wednesday, ADOC came in in order to present some findings in which they were edicting by the Attorney General to provide some immediate action to northbound 79 whereby it goes on to Coolidge. This is a similar temporary closure that they conducted last March. So they did a hard closure starting on the 15th, which was last Friday. In addition to that, they look into acquiring funding to make permanent improvements, either in the form of a T intersection or roundabout, probably not until the year 2016. So basically, we're looking for a two, maybe three-year hard closure of that portion of State Highway 79. The alternate route would be similar to what it was last time, basically down 79, cross Bu and down Main, which by, you know, basically is about a two, two-and-a-half mile route, goes through two lights, three school crossings, and then on to 287. Another advance warning is placed at Cactus Forest Road in order to indicate an alternate route to Coolidge through Cactus Forest Road. So the other issues that they did, basically, there's no change in the left-turn lane at Florence Heights. This is a left-turn lane that was added during the temporary closure and will remain in place. We have a concern about that because there's only a storage lane there. There's no taper that leads into that left-turn lane. And basically, the other issues that we are concerned about is right-angle collisions on State Highway 79. Traffic exiting from Florence Heights westbound onto 79 northbound on the east end of Florence Heights is a concern of ours, because basically you're creating a safety issue. There's a lot of undulations or rutting of Bu Road taking place in the passing lane, both eastbound and westbound. And ADOC's history, in accordance with maintenance on that segment of road, including the intersection of Main and Bu, has not been very, done very well in the past. We're also concerned about the crossover traffic on the west side of Florence Road in order to get into State Highway 287. So as you exit on the west side, you have to cross a lane of traffic and then transition, you have a short transition, short crossover to 287. That's another concern of ours. The two chiefs, Chief Hughes and Chief Durant, also expressed some concerns about response time in regards to emergency services. What we have done since that time, we immediately, after the meeting, it started on Thursday, what we did, we immediately did some structural repairs to the road and also some shouldering to assist with the Florence Heights remediation. Second, we're improving the school crossing by adding additional sliding and adding a ladder-type school crossings at the two locations on Florence Heights Road. Third, we're adding caution signs both on the east and west side of Florence Heights Road, and also have on order a special sign addressing the crossover transitional traffic onto 287. So when that comes in, we'll order that. Fourth, we're evaluating the type of surface that will provide a scrub seal or a better wearing course on Florence Heights Road for this temporary detour that will occur, temporary being two years. But that scrub seal will be dependent on the type, on the alligator that is present there. And last, we will strike the road. All in the bout, this will cause us to basically review a design of Florence Heights Road with the intersection of 79 at, on the east side because of the fact that not taking out that left turn lane onto Florence Light, it creates problematic for us in that it doesn't align with our realignment of Florence Heights Road to provide a proper tangent, ninety-degree turn onto State Highway 79. So we're looking at those aspects. And basically, that sums up the detour and the hard closure of that State Highway 79 to the Coolidge area, State Highway 287.
The one thing, can you make available to us the results of the survey that they did back when they ran their survey on the number of vehicles and turning and everything?
Yes, they did, and I think that'll be presented on council by ADOC on March 4. My recollection is that increased the left turns onto Florence Heights Road, which basically there were very few previously, but as I recall, there's about at least fifty turning movements onto Florence Heights Road. Yes, they have released the two studies, the results of the traffic analysis, traffic study that they did, and also their conclusions based upon communications that was done with the public at that time.
So they've definitely decided on a roundabout?
No, they haven't decided whether they're going with a T intersection or roundabout at this time.
But they're going to leave that detour up for two years, huh?
Pardon?
The detour is going to be there for two years, is that?
That's correct. At least two years. They'll be here on March 4 to address the council. And there's also going to be some outreach, I think it probably is a joint effort between ADOC and a PIO officer.
Mayor, the second item I wanted to discuss with council is, you all may recall, a few weeks ago, staff came forward to council regarding the Suncor MPO. Council went ahead and passed a resolution letting staff work with Casa Grande, Eloy, Pinale County, and Coolidge to be part of the Suncor MPO as long as the Santan Valley and the Superstition Vista's project were incorporated within that MPO. Over the past several weeks, there have been some significant facts that have just recently come out. One of those is that we found out that as of the 2010 census, the state, along with the federal government, has agreed that the Santan Valley is part of MAG, that it is not sitting there alone and could be incorporated into the MPO for Suncor. So in order for the Santan Valley to come out of MAG, seventy-five percent of the governing, you know, the organizations in MAG would have to vote to get out, and then they'd have to vote or apply to get into the Suncor MPO. So we now need to come back to council next week, on Monday, for additional direction, whether that would be to continue and move forward, to be a part of the Suncor MPO, to consider going into MAG, to do nothing, or just to stay in the CAG. So we definitely need to come back to council for that direction on Monday.
You're asking for a special meeting Monday?
Yes, I am, for a special meeting, sir.
Directions of council on special meetings have been, if we're going to have them, to be on Monday? So Monday at five or six?
I'll be out of town next week, so I won't be available.
Five or six? Okay, we'll post it, let staff determine the time.
Thank you. And that is all I have, sir.
Set at 5:30. Any other discussion? I'm going to report, any other comments or any questions the department has on departmental reports?
Yes, I have one issue I'd like to look at as far as for public works. On Attaway Road, about a quarter mile south of Hunt Highway, we've had barricades up there that says Florence, Town of Florence, in regards to a drop-off that's very close to the edge of the road. Are we looking at developing that area, fixing it?
Mayor Rankin, Vice Mayor Smith, Councilman Montoya, the reason for the barricades is for a guard rail at that location. That hasn't been completed, and we need to evaluate some clear distances before we finalize the design of that guard rail. And that's the intent of those barricades. Within the limits of the barricades, that's where the guard rail will be, and that's to protect drop-off into that ditch in that area.
Is there an estimated time of when this will be occurring?
We just got, we'll get back to the design on that and then complete that, because it requires both a tapered section on the south end and a curved section on the north end, and that's the hiccup that we have to design about.
All right, Doc.
Any other? And this is the second call to the public for comments to be made, anything about what we've done tonight. And again, call to the public for comments on issues within the jurisdiction of the town council. Council rules limit public comment to three minutes. Individual council members may respond to criticism made by those commenting, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, members of the council shall not discuss or take action on any matter in an open call to the public unless the matters are properly noticed for discussion of legal action. Anybody from the public have anything? Seeing no movement, we'll go to call to council. Tara?
I'd like to start off by saying, Laura, congratulations again on your fifteen years service employee. And also, Chief Hughes, I was very proud when I read the report that stated that Florence, Arizona, has achieved the ranking of the seventeenth safest city in America, based on our research, and we were awarded the certificate. So congratulations, thank you. And last but not least, this weekend, on Sunday, February 24, there will be Pauline Weaver and the Mountain Men of the West at the Pinale County Historical Museum, so please come on down at 2:00 PM. Thank you.
Yeah?
I have nothing.
Valerie?
We've lost a longtime member of our community, Mrs. Valerie Neal. So I say we be in prayer for that family. Her service will be Saturday at 11:00 AM at the Presbyterian Church.
Tommy?
Just a thank you to all the volunteers during the time of the home show and pretty much.
Ruben?
Just to point out about Florence High School basketball team, that they went to the state playoffs, and they lost in the first round by two points, but they gave a good fight. So it's the first time that Florence has been participating in one of the playoffs so far this year, other than cheerleading and I think cross- so far this year, other than cheerleading and, I think, cross country. So it is, we have an opportunity. I know wrestling went to state as well, so I'm glad to see our high schools are doing pretty well. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to thank all those with the town and staff that helped with home tour, especially with the Tom Mix Car, Public Works, great job, town staff, council. That is probably the main item that has brought more people to this town in one day than I've ever seen before, because we lost track at 1200 at the museum, and that was only 2:00 in the afternoon. So it was well worth putting our best foot forward, and the town did it. Thank you.
And seconding Valerie on the prayer issue for Mrs. Neal, a lady that's been here since, I believe, '62, and has been around and a very active member in our senior club, Senior Citizen Center. I want to also remind you, on Saturday morning, I believe at 9:00, is the Spring Fling at Caliente, for those of you that want to go to that. It'll be out there. It's kind of a fun event to go to. A lot of things are going on. We have Little League that just started up, taking registrations for kids, for boys and girls, for softball and baseball. So the Little League signup is in the process at this time. They are looking for sponsorships for teams, if anybody is interested in it. Get ahold of my boss, Donna, and she'll get you straightened out. She straightens me out, so she's going to straighten you out, too. Other than that, ladies and gentlemen, meeting adjourned. Thank you for coming. We need a motion.
Make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
We have a motion, a second, adjourn the meeting. All in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Good night.